In commission meeting, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, we call the meeting to order at seven thirty. If you'll please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Tom?
Here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Frost?
Here.
Huntsman here. Lewandowski?
Here.
McLaughlin?
Here.
Merle?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
All present.
Approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted for March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Public comments. A lot of people in here today. Because then we have snacks.
Is this open public comment?
That's why you're all here for the snacks. Oh, you have a comment or snacks?
It's an open public comment right now.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I am on Pontiac Trail. There's a couple of less for Cardinal Farms. I know that this has been a ordeal now for over a year, if not longer than that. So they bought property on Pontiac Trail next to Doug's house and mine. Our concern with their production of Pontiac Trail is, yet again, safety and well-being of our property. They were having a gathering two weeks ago, and one of their representatives for their party decided to come through our front yard and did damage to our property. They, Cardinal Farms, did not approach us at all in the last year and a half that they've been trying to do this, including purchasing this house to continue further their projects. So when we decided to gather other people from their neighborhood, they then decided to approach us and said that they would produce trees between our property, which clearly they're coming up our driveway to go on our front yard. That's not going to save our property from any damage that they're doing. So their fun adventures are going to continue doing damage to my property. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of you guys, because I'm not sure if you guys are aware of the damage that was caused to our property. And again, not knowing what continued damage is going to happen, there's no resolution to further damage or liability. It was a wet rainy night, and they came close to going in our pond in their front yard.
And your name is?
Stacy Crozier.
Any other public comment? Chairperson comment?
Stacy, if you have concerns in regards to things like that, your best bet is probably
to make sure you talk to the office and do your complaints there, and they'll help guide you.
Okay, thank you.
Good, no problem. That was my own comment. New business items, none. Old business items? Eight zero seven zero north territorial conditional rezoning. Would you like to do a brief where we are?
Thank you, Madam Chair, sure. There, we discussed this at the public hearing that was held on February twenty-fourth. Would you, or twenty, yeah, twenty-fourth, would you like me to give a full overview of the plan or updates?
I don't think we need a full overview. Everybody should have read their packet. It's very short. Maybe just what has changed.
Sure. So the conditions that have been offered by the applicant have evolved slightly. They are a bit more refined based on the feedback that was given and just general discussions that were had at the last meeting. The list of uses that would be possible with any conditional rezoning to LI from AR has been shortened. You can see the list on that third page of the packet. There's also some more fleshed out details in terms of prohibiting noise, outdoor activities, and screening and so on. And then there was also a concept plan that was provided, and one of the conditions specifically states that any site plan would be essentially compatible with that concept plan. But a site plan is not what's being applied for right now or voted on in any way. That would be, so that condition would come into play down the line when a site plan application comes forth. In the meantime, based on this list of conditions, you are all to make a motion on whether or not this can be rezoned from AR to LI. And there is a list, or there are standards in the zoning ordinance, and in the review from the last meeting, there are some suggested findings in there. Any discussion that you all have before making the decision should go through those standards to see how the application is or is not compliant or conforming to what those standards are asking. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I got a bad chair. So I know one of the concerns we talked about last time was rezoning that stays with the property. So what happens to it when Mr. Butcher sells or it moves on? That, and that goes against our master plan. So that was a concern that we were discussing, just as a reminder. I think there was also a question is, and Mr. Butcher, I think you probably had left before we had our discussion, but we're discussing why it went to LI and not general commercial, or that question came up, and what the difference is between general commercial and light industrial. I still had that question when I went through the packet. I didn't quite understand why we went from, you know, to the most, you know, not the most intrusive, but, you know, a higher level. Actually, I'm going to ask her, but thank you. We might have questions for you. We're not shy. We'll let you know.
Well, the general commercial and light industrial, they permit different sets of uses, but in terms of intensity, it's hard to measure one against the other. My understanding is that if, right now, the warehouse building is not usable, and a warehouse is most often seen in the light industrial or general industrial zoning district. I'm sure the applicant can provide further insight to what he was thinking for not doing general commercial, but warehousing is more compatible with industrial.
Okay. I just wanted the real actual rules. Not that. Okay. Why was this not a zoning variance? Or would that even be an option? I'm asking some of these, I'm asking some of these questions because they're policy, general procedure, general practice, as opposed to the actual use.
Well, we don't do use variances, so the, it would, the variance would be to allow for essentially a relaxing of a dimensional standard. Right now, the building as it stands doesn't comply with any of the dimensional standards, so it's already totally non-conforming. So a variance that would be requested would be for a use, and our zoning ordinance does not enable that. You can't ask for a use that's not within the zoning district, that's not permitted within your zoning district. So that's why it'd have to be a rezoning. And then this list of conditions was offered in order to, you know, put, make a rezoning to LI more palatable, essentially.
Correct. I remember that. Okay. I just want to get some of my big more policy, and then I know you guys have some things, so, yeah, no, I'm done with that part, so.
What exists that stays with the owner that puts through the change? And once that owner no longer owns, once if they move on or anything, it reverts back? Is there something that?
Variances run with the land. Rezonings, whether conditional or not, run with the land. So any change of ownership would not revert any decision. And in fact, revert is not a great word, because even if it were to revert, you'd still have to go through due process. Like, say you, say you said, okay, we'll allow this conditional zoning, but you have to do it within one or two years or whatever you decide, and if you don't satisfy those requirements, it reverts back, you would still all have to hold a public hearing and make a motion about the rezoning. You'd have to go through due process still. So nothing reverts, and certainly nothing reverts if a property changes owners.
Did you have questions?
No.
I'm looking at this production of genetic materials. What does that mean? Yeah. Right, Bob brought the thing. Is that something manure hazard that creates biohazard or anything like that?
Well, if it is, it's permitted in LI now. It's scientific research, you know, chemical labs. Could, I mean, there's a lot of other state and federal regulations around that.
I see that, just my comments on the limitations, Mr. Butcher, I think did everything we asked him to. We don't want to hear anything, we don't want to see anything. He did a great job. The deliveries, I mean, he addressed, he addressed all the issues. Any use will adhere to the, I guess, let me skip that. So Michelle, in section, on page of the report, page six, so I'm going through this report. This is just last month's report.
Yep.
Because the response was, is, does not fit to what this is, because he fixed everything, correct?
Right, yeah, this is just because.
Right.
You get it.
Yep, I got it, just checking.
There's a, there's a short memo before the application, which is like, update from us.
Okay.
But we put this one in there.
Yep.
As an homage to what was.
Okay.
Pam, your initial question, what two were you comparing?
Actually, I was looking, I was thinking of local commercial, not general commercial, local commercial as opposed to light industrial, because we just went through that with McCarter.
Right.
Right? That's not normally what we put there, but it's kind of a small thing, servicing the community. So I was just wondering why, you know, we were thinking, I wonder why we went to manufacturing, which I know we were having a lot of heartburn over, was that whole manufacturing word? Because that usually does not result in anything that we're looking for. We're thinking, why are we going to that category as opposed to something different?
And I can't speak for the applicant, but my understanding is it's all about the building that's currently there being a warehouse.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Butcher.
It actually, so I read through general, general commercial. And general commercial has a lot of traffic, like basically everything that is there has traffic a lot. So the building would fit to a general commercial, but maybe in a neighborhood one. I mean, the traffic that it allows for, I believe bars, restaurant, like so many things, I just don't want to be in there too.
Right, well, what you wanted is call it something commercial, local commercial is a little, is a little bit different, but.
Still in that, like, traffic.
Maybe, maybe not, depends on the restrictions you run on. And so that's, that's, I'm just trying to parse through what the actual rules were and then what your actual intentions were, so, yep.
One of the things I did through the research from what you guys requested, I started looking at what is permitted in the agricultural and industrial area, and home occupations is one. And you go to forty dash two zero four of the ordinance, it tells you what the home occupations are, which is way more extensive than what I'm asking.
I want to chime in. The home occupations have a whole other set of specific use provisions that limit the nuisance, or not the nuisance, that essentially limit any detection of the occupation outside of the building. So even if inside it's like a comparable activity, the scale is so wildly different from what would be permitted in general commercial versus a home occupation. So, just to make that clear. Like, if a baker's in their kitchen, they're not baking at the same scale as a bakery.
Right.
Yeah, I would say that the, so like, you can do a whole, you can do repair services, car repair, restoration of services, so that's all cloud obnoxious. You can have a landscape company like we didn't want.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of things that you can add to this limits even further.
Right.
And I understand that, like, you can't have park, like, the whole thing, you can't have more than one car, there's a lot of limitations to that. We're fine with limiting more if we had to.
Sure.
But I mean, there's only, I think there's six parking spots that we, or seven parking spots that we need to.
Right, right. And we don't mean to give you a hard time, it's just that when you're changing an entire zoning, and granted, it's one point one five, right? But we're looking at going against them, and we just want to be sure. So we're just kind of throwing everything out there. Sometimes one person will say something, and it brings up something else, because we often get beat up, usually down the road, like a year or two, and say, well, plain commission, how come you allow this? And we're like, oh, that crystal ball, somebody borrowed it. You know, so we're just, that's all we're doing right here. So, but you did, I think you did a good job in restricting, I think, the fifteen hundred pound vehicles.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's pretty restrictive.
Motor home weighs twenty four thousand pounds.
Right. I think we talked about, you know, that all of this is contingent upon what he has, a site plan would have to come next. Michelle, would we do it, like, a time, when, when these things, like, say they go through, is there like a period of time in which he has to, like, start stop timing, like any other development of things?
You can attach a time, you can attach a deadline, essentially. Are you thinking, like, attaching the deadline by which point a site plan that conforms with this must be submitted, or?
I don't know, what's normal. But is that with the site plan or is that with the zoning?
Well, the site plan has the.
I think it has to be with the zoning, right?
You, yeah, so the, the site plan has their own set of deadlines, but you can attach a deadline to this conditional rezoning. And essentially, you'd be saying, all these conditions have to be met by this time, and since a lot of them are in perpetuity, like, you would really be looking at the site plan aspect of it. Because all of those other conditions would be part of the site plan.
Okay.
Right? Because you're talking about the use and the lighting and the landscaping, so.
Well, I was thinking, if you know, give me one second. So, Mr. Butcher will have to demonstrate that he has approvals from the health department when he goes to the site plan, and if all that doesn't come through, then the conditions revert back. Should use that word, yeah. So what I'm trying to let these guys know, because I know they're paying attention over here real closely, is that that's another key to the things that we're paying attention to, just to make sure we're being very thorough in our analysis.
With local commercial, can you just quickly, I don't have the book looking, but can you we're applying for here?
In terms of the uses?
Yes, ma'am.
One moment, please. You can sit down if you want.
A lot of the uses in local commercial are conditional, but you can have banks are similar, barber shops are similar, copy centers. You're, you're talking about convenience, convenience goods and services, small scale, something that people, they like to have locally, they don't do comparison shopping for professional, small professional offices or doctor's offices, therapist's offices.
Smaller scale, but more traffic in and out. Where, I think what he's trying to do is, like, here's a work spot, they come in at this time, or more than six of them, and then they leave. That, that was my understanding of the difference, because I was looking at the same thing.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to see, I guess just confirm the industrial type language or manufacturing type language in both, which is very open-ended, but I certainly get the vehicle traffic.
Yeah, the uses in local commercial are certainly, they tend to be more customer-facing. So that's why, you know, comparing it intensity between the different districts is challenging, because they vary in, there's different ways to measure intensity.
Right.
Do you have any questions? No, since I'm in the meeting, I just got my here. Okay. I'm sensing a question from you.
We've got to be consistent up here with the way we treat anybody that comes in. So I question myself on that. I look at it, and I sit there and say, nope, I'd love to beautify this corner. I know personally what type of work this gentleman does. It's exquisite. Okay? What I'm trying to understand is what makes this particular piece of property different than any other piece of property in Salem Township? So that a resident could come in and say, oh, it's rezag, and I could do a lot better or make a lot more money or whatever, this, that, the other, if I change it over to light industrial or whatever commercial. So I want to change my rezag property to that. What makes this piece of property different? Help me understand that. What, what makes this property different that we would consider? Because every time we created the urban service district, we created this master plan in the urban service district that sits there and says, all, you own a chain of gas stations, you want to put up another gas station, you want to, you come to Salem Township, say, I really, I'd love to put up a gas station. This body, this office sits there and says, go to the urban service district. That's why we created it. You want to do that, you go to the urban service district. That has been the answer, that's what we did, that's so we don't have things that we even have to question being attempted to pop up. So help me, what is, what is special about this piece of property?
And I'm going to just think, one little comment, on the last page in there, and this is one of the things where those questions says, additional factors. One, because of the unique circumstances of this particular property. And in the very beginning of the report, it says, because this property, because the building's only thirteen feet from the property line, because of this, because of that, because of that. And then at the very end, it says, this rezoning could be determined to not set a precedent because of its a unique situation with an existing building that was designed and used for light industrial type uses before the establishment of the current zoning ordinance. And one of the things we talked about, and I'm sorry, you guys weren't here, is we say we don't like to put things in a situation or change things just because we can. You know, people say, oh, yeah, I can change that. Yeah, it's doable. We used to hear that from our previous planner. Yeah, it's doable, we can do that, and we kind of all went along with it. And then I think for the last couple of years, I think we've been pretty good at saying, no, this is the master plan, we're going to stick with that. This, you know, oh, this is deemed the gentleman that come in, the Robertson Homes, he says, well, yes, but this property, it's like on the verge of being bought or whatever, they want, they wanted to sell it, but our housing was next to it, and they wanted to just add to it, which is exactly what this township and their residents do not want. So we stuck to our guns on that. So that's an excellent question.
Okay, so the building, yeah, I understand the building offset.
It's a unique situation.
Yeah, I mean, we've dealt with that before. I know my neighbor, they actually went out and surveyed and said, actually, your subject field is fifteen feet over our property line. And what are you going to do with that? I mean, you work with it. You figure something out, you find a solution.
Sure.
Okay, I'm not so worried about offset, but we're saying because it's an existing building that is clearly an industrial, commercial type building, it's not appropriate for residential or anything.
It's not appropriate for anything. And when you look at the pictures.
Okay, so if it's.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to say.
I'm not trying to dispute this, I just, you guys missed this one conversation.
I'm trying to get stuff out of the table and have the conversation.
Yeah.
Like, if you want to answer anytime, I'm okay with Mike answering. But okay, so the side offsets or whatever offsets are not conforming, okay, great. But if we're saying it's because of the building, does that mean this building never comes down? Because if the building comes down, it's a fresh piece of property, well, then you don't have to worry about sightlines, and the building is not a special condition anymore. It's not a condition to do this.
And how long is that?
If it's because it's a commercial building, that's obviously not a residential.
Right, and who's going to tear it down for what, for one point one five? Those are the sum of the things we wrestled with last month, too. Acres. It's only one acre.
But if you buy one point three five acres from a neighbor, now it's two and a half after sightlines and two after that, and you conform to rezag.
If, if, he's here in front of us now.
But that's what we're talking about here, ifs. So I'm just trying.
Nope, nope, that's good.
I'm trying to get stuff out on the table here and understand.
Yeah.
So do I want to see that corner beautified? Absolutely. Do I think you would make it, do a great job, and it would be just, absolutely. But down the road, the crystal ball that you come up with is the, okay, I has ten acres on a corner of, you know, this, that, this and that, and says, I want to make it, I will make it light commercial.
Sure.
And I have a building there, it's a pole barn. It's not good for a home, it's only good for commercial usage.
Then they'll have to come in and, and we'll talk to them, just as, as just the same as we've talked to everyone else, so.
I would, I would say that when I was doing the research of this property, the original building was built in nineteen forty-four. It has been industrial since nineteen forty-four. There was an addition done in nineteen seventy-seven. It was industrial then, it's been industrial and it was used as industrial property up until the point that I bought it. The only reason I'm standing here today is there is a clause in your guys' zoning that after six months of the business, the prior business leaving, it lost its grandfather class. So now I can't go in and do exactly what's been going on for the last hundred years or eighty years. I can't do that. I have to come and ask permission to do exactly what's been going on for the last eighty years.
You owned it for six months now, over six months now?
Yeah.
Things are always changing.
Six months. I'm guessing you found out about that on month seven?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was.
Yeah, because it's last August, right?
Yeah, it was August, but it was prior to that, that I, it was, I lived into it and lived into it until I went and had this. And it was grandfathered in, it was good, I bought it, we went in and demoed some of the, there was an illegal grow in there, so we demoed their equipment out, and I got red tag, and I was told it's, no, it's done combined, and it's, I had to do all this.
And, and the reason, you know, nobody in Salem Township likes much of this process. However, we do have things in Salem Township that just get out of hand and out of control, so therefore we, like, all get it.
You're not part of, the red tag is, you're not allowed to go in the building, you're not allowed to do anything with it, what does that mean?
Let's, let's move on. Start, do you have more additional questions for, for this site, this site right here, this rezoning? Not yet? Because Mike has one, you don't.
Yeah, go, please.
I guess I just want to confirm, we are simply approving the zoning amendment or change? We have no, or we can't set them?
A lot of the uses in local commercial are conditional. But you can have banks are similar, barber shops are similar, copy centers. You're talking about convenience goods and services. Small scale, something that people, they like to have locally, they don't do comparison shopping for professional, small professional offices or doctor's offices, therapist's offices.
Smaller scale but more traffic in and out. I think what he's trying to do is like, here's a work spot, they come in at this time. There are more than six of them, and then they leave. That was my understanding of the difference, because I was looking at the same thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to see, I guess just confirm the industrial type language or manufacturing type language in both. Which is very open-ended, but I certainly get the vehicle traffic.
Especially on everyone else.
Yeah, the uses in local commercial are certainly, they tend to be more customer-facing. So that's why, you know, comparing it intensity between the different districts is challenging, because they vary. There's different ways to measure intensity.
Right.
Do you have any questions? No, since I'm in the meeting, if I just go right here. Okay. But I'm sensing a question from you.
Right. Um. We've got to be consistent up here with the way we treat anybody that comes in. So I question myself on that. I look at it and I sit there and say, oh, I'd love to beautify this corner. I know personally what type of work this gentleman does. It's exquisite. Okay? What I'm trying to understand is what makes this particular piece of property different than any other piece of property in Salem Township? So that a resident could come in and say, oh, it's rezag. And I could do a lot better, make a lot more money, or whatever, this, that, and the other, if I change it over to like industrial or whatever, commercial. So I want to change my rezag property to that. What makes this piece of property different? Help me understand that. What makes this property different that we would consider? Because every time we created the urban service district, we created this master plan in the urban service district that sits there and says, all right. You own a chain of gas stations, you want to put up another gas station, you want to, you come to Salem Township, say, I really, I'd love to put up a gas station. This body, this office sits there and says, go to the urban service district. That's why we created it. You want to do that, you go to the urban service district. That has been the answer, that's what we did, that's so we don't have things that we even have to question being tempted to pop up. So help me, what is, what is special about this piece of property?
And I'm going to just take one little comment. On the last page in there, and this is one of the things where those questions says, additional factors. One, because of the unique circumstances of this particular property. And in the very beginning of the report, it says, because this property, because the building's only 13 feet from the property line, because of this, because of that, because of that. And then at the very end it says, this rezoning could be determined to not set a precedent because of its a unique situation with an existing building that was designed and used for light industrial type uses before the establishment of the current zoning ordinance. And one of the things we talked about, and I'm sorry, you guys weren't here, is we say, we don't like to put things in a situation or change things just because we can. You know, people say, oh yeah, I can change that. Yeah, it's doable. We used to hear that from our previous planner. Yeah, it's doable, we can do that, and we kind of all went along with it. And then I think for the last couple of years, I think we've been pretty good at saying, nope, this is the master plan. We're going to stick with that. This, you know, oh, this is deemed the gentleman that come in, the Robertson Homes. He says, well, yes, but this property, it's like on the verge of being bought, or whatever, they wanted, they wanted to sell it, but our housing was next to it, and they wanted to just add to it, which is exactly what this township and their residents do not want. So we stuck to our guns on that. So that's an excellent question.
Okay, so the building, yeah, I understand the building offset.
It's a unique situation.
Yeah, I mean, we've dealt with that before. I know my neighbor had, they actually went out and surveyed and said, actually, your septic field is 15 feet over our property line. And what are you going to do with that? I mean, you work with it. If there's something, if you find a solution. Okay. I'm not so worried about offset, but we're saying because it's an existing building that is clearly an industrial, commercial type building, it's not appropriate for residential or anything.
It's not appropriate for anything. And when you look at the pictures.
So, okay, so if it's, okay, so I'm going to say.
I'm not trying to dispute this. I just, you guys missed this little conversation.
I'm trying to get stuff out on the table and have the conversation. Like, if you want to answer anytime, I'm okay with Mike answering. But okay, so the side offsets or whatever offsets are not conforming. Okay, great. But if we're saying it's because of the building, does that mean this building never comes down? Because if the building comes down, it's a fresh piece of property, well then, you don't have to worry about sightlines, and the building is not a special condition anymore. It's not a condition to do this.
And how long is that ugly building that'll sit there?
If it's because it's a commercial building, that's obviously not a residential.
Right, and who's going to tear it down for what? For 1.15? Those are the sum of the things we wrestled with last month, too.
Acres.
It's only one acre.
But if you buy 1.35 acres from a neighbor, now it's two and a half after sightlines and two after that, and you conform to rezag.
If, if, he's here in front of us now.
But that's what we're talking about here, ifs. So I'm just trying, I'm trying to get stuff out on the table here and understand.
Yeah.
So do I want to see that corner beautified? Absolutely. Do I think you would make it, do a great job and it would be just, absolutely. But down the road, the crystal ball that you come up with is the, okay, guy has 10 acres on a corner of, you know, this, that, this and that, and says, I want to make it, I will make it light commercial.
Sure.
And I have a building there. It's a pole barn. It's not good for a home, it's only good for commercial usage.
Then they'll have to come in and we'll talk to them, just as, as just the same as we've talked to everyone else, so.
I would, I would say that when I was doing the research of first property, the original building was built in 1944. It has been industrial since 1944. There was an addition done in 1977. It was industrial then. It's been industrial and it was used as industrial property up until the point that I bought it. Only reason I'm staying here today is there's a clause in your guys' zoning that after six months of the business, the prior business leaving, it lost its grandfather clause. So now I can't go in and do exactly what's been going on for the last 100 years, 80 years. I can't do that. I have to come and ask permission to do exactly what's been going on for the last 80 years.
You owned it for six months now, over six months now?
Yeah.
Things are always changing.
Six months, seven years. I'm guessing you found out about that on month seven?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because it's last August, right?
Yeah, it was August, but it was prior to that, that I, it was, I lived into it and lived into it until I went ahead of this. And it was grandfathered in, I was good, I bought it. We went in and demoed some of the, there was an illegal grow in there, so we demoed their equipment out, and I got red tag, and I was told it's, no, it's stunk fine, and it's, I had to do all this.
Yep. And the reason, you know, nobody in Salem Township likes much of this process. However, we do have things in Salem Township that just get out of hand and out of control. So therefore, we like, all get.
And I'm partnering, the red tag is, you're not allowed to go in the building, you're not allowed to do anything with it, what does that mean?
Let's move on. Bart, do you have more additional questions for this site, this site right here, this rezoning? Not yet? Because Mike has one, you don't.
Yeah, go, please.
I guess I just want to confirm, we are simply approving the zoning amendment or change? We have no, oh, we can't set limitations on any of the potential renters or, I guess, you know, what businesses go in there, what businesses don't go in there?
You cannot alter the condition list at all. The only thing that you can add is a timeline by which they have to be met.
The condition list that I applied, that's my goal, is to limit the types of businesses in there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Are these the suggestions?
Those are my limitations that I propose, that only those can go into.
I, myself, I only see one. I mean, I've taken the women from what was in there. I mean, because I don't live that far from the place. And for me, it was a long time after I lived here that I found out it was a place revealed in Caskins.
Yes.
But you never heard anything. You never knew until a truck came back up and you see a loading and things. And I'd go down that list and I don't see anything that I think fits that.
So that would fall in our manufacturing, industrial manufacturing, the grandmother area. And the last time we were here, you guys asked to remove the manufacturing. So did limits even further? So my, my goal, I mean, I live close enough here, I can't close enough to see it, I recall my backboard. My goal is I am here. I was to sell it 10 years from now or 20 years from now, and I'm still in the house. I'm closer than anyone, I am here.
So just to confirm, you're saying that this is what you want to remove? Like this is not allowed?
That's the only things that are.
That are allowed. Okay. And are you planning on keeping it, selling it?
Yeah.
It's a long-term investment for you guys?
Yeah, it's at least 10 years. Unless you're going to really, really dig off.
Sure.
Hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then traffic hours, 7:00 AM to 10:00, restricted for no deliveries. We have days of the week for that? Is that Monday through Friday?
Yeah.
I didn't see that written in here. Okay, so.
I could add that very.
That might be in the other. Yeah, I don't see any days in here.
Help me out here. I guess, I guess that maybe this comes in, we get through this, then this comes in with site plan stuff, but any sort of questions about the condition of the property itself, like, I mean, the septic field, the well, I mean, I know what you have to go through to get septic field approval now, but that's, that's after a rezoning, that's literally the site plan consideration. We want to put in eight bathrooms, while can the septic field handle that?
Correct.
And guessing that the building was put in in 19, what did you say?
1977, the septic field and well were moved after that. And I tested all that prior to purchase.
Mr. Butcher just mentioned that he wanted to put days in. What do we do with that? Because we can't change anything.
If it is being officially offered by the applicant during the meeting, you could in any motion indicate as stated at the March 17th meeting, or with amendments stated at the March 17th meeting, to limit the number of days, as volunteered by the applicant.
Do we, do we have to say we have to be specific, right? I don't know, that's not my call. I just thought if you had more questions, and then if he wanted anything to add, we'd let him add at the end.
If you're comparing like, I'll just say hazardous waste material that can exist on an agricultural residential, something, a fertilizer, or a weed killer, or something like that, herbicide, that's on agricultural residential, as you move towards, I'll say the more intense operations, I'm meaning it, interpreting that, going into, you know, general commercial or industrial or something like that, does that list of substances that can be on the property expand? You know, oil drums, oil storage, you know, you go to an oil, no, you can't do.
It becomes more oversight. If, you can have certain licenses that would afford you to use other materials or chemicals. And certainly, if it's a commercial property, there's going to be more oversight than if it's a AR residential property.
And here's, here's where I'm going with this. When you see like, commercial, general, industrial, things like that, as we talk about the urban service district, anything down there would be on septic and city water. Right? If you had a ground spill, if you had something that came out of something that you didn't want to come out, and it got into the ground, you're not necessarily talking about trashing local wells, the aquifers and everything that exists. Whereas you put something like this in an area where it's well and septic, and you have something get loose, you're threatening exactly that. Battery guys, God bless them, you know, that type of concern. So seeing what this list says you can do, I'm, I'm very interested in what, what could be there, volunteered by the applicant, that would say, these things would never be there, even if it's this, because of the environmental concerns for people right next door being on the bus, for everything slanting from here to Detroit.
So if there's a way to put that in through the ordinance, I have no problem doing that. I did have prior, in the prior report, that there would be no, kind of like what you're talking about, because I was thinking through that. But it came up through review that my wording wasn't.
Well, you were conforming with laws that are already going to be in place no matter what, so it would be redundant. Now, if you're offering a condition that goes beyond any local federal or state law, then that could be something that you offer as a condition. That wasn't what was in the previous version. And I'm not sure if that is what.
As I said, it comes back to what ifs of the spill when it comes to local wells. Literally that.
Whether or not it, they're conforming with the law.
I mean, you have something in the middle of the USD, you know, an oil truck opens up in the middle of Godferson Road, in the middle of the USD, you know, it's going to go into pipes. The soil there is not something we're pulling water out of. Now, could it hit, as the, as the everything slopes, something to the, you know, something to the east of that, yeah, quite possibly. But you know it's not going to hit anything within 200 yards, because everything there is piped in and piped out.
I can appreciate your concern, and I believe it's probably, correct me if I'm wrong, a general concern about allowing a limited industrial use in area outside of the USD, correct? Whether or not there, there are concessions to protect it, because sometimes things go wrong. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so.
So that would be, as you all are.
Mr. Butcher here has put a list of things that it could do, but I think in my interest of it, would be some things that, when considering the environmental effects of what could be done, or what would be allowed under those, something that said, this is what would protect the groundwater, will come down to that.
Yeah. I don't know how to put it, but I consider toxic waste allowed on the property, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's all, right. So we don't want to say things that are already law, and if, I know it's weird, it's like you're not requesting it, but you're giving feedback, but if, if there's a desire to have something that goes beyond the law in order to ensure protection, like that would have to be something that.
And I don't know if that even exists. It's more of a due diligence question.
I think we're getting too far in the weeds on this. There's, there, I appreciate it, I understand it, I'm glad you brought it up, I'm glad we're talking about it, I'm glad Mr. Butcher's hearing it, but there's already laws and he has responsibilities. Something happens in Salem, everyone gets ratted out, that's just the way it is around here. But, and he lives right there, too. So I think there's already laws and rules, if he, whoever comes in, somebody's going to be checking on him, whether it's the EPA, or whatever they got going, especially if it's that type of a business, right?
Yes.
So, okay.
Got a comment there?
Okay, yes.
I have, I'm not comfortable with this. What is it going to do in the township? What kind of a precedent is this going to set elsewhere here in the township? I've got, it can't, even if I got a barn on my property, it's, I don't do nothing with it, I bought it, and I can't use it, I don't use it.
If you look on page eight, if you look on page eight of the report, the addition of that appears to be one of Bart's concerns, too.
This is page eight of last, from last month?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's still in the same, it's in the same packet, it's resubmitted. This zoning could be determined to not set a precedent because it's a unique situation. And there's a lot going on here, it's a lot to process all at once, for sure. But it says, because it's so unique, I mean, this, the building's like 13 feet off the property line on one side, 15 on the other, there's nothing we can do with that building, it's been there forever like this. So all he wants to do is clean it up and have a little side gig, I guess, that's my understanding. It's our job to ensure.
Perfect warehouse.
Yes. To ensure that because we're going against the master plan. Right. We're just, we're trying to dot all our i's and cross our t's. And if you look at the restrictions he puts on there, it's tight. So if there's anything outside of that, I mean, the only other thing that I think he's willing, he's willing to add in whatever he needs to to get out of here, whether it's days of the, of the week of what he's expected for the operations. But I think we need to be careful in telling him what he can and cannot put in there, and what he's supposed to do. I mean, it's good that we're talking about it, but as long as there are protective measures for those things, I, I don't have any additional questions. Bart? Does anybody else have any additional questions? There are seven people here.
So it's unique because of the offsets and because of the existing building?
Yes. Size, yeah.
So if the building comes down, the offsets are no longer unique and existing, and the building therefore is not there, so it's no longer unique or existing.
Correct. But any other building you put up there besides the building is going to be limited as well, correct?
It would have to comply with all the dimensional standards of the LI, and because it's such a small lot, you're going to end up with a small building, yeah, essentially. You couldn't rebuild on the same footprint if the building were to come down by any means.
Right.
Right.
It would be a lot smaller. If he was in town, it'd be a lot smaller, really. The footprint would be, would be less square footage?
Well, because it's such a small parcel, and the setbacks for LI are very large, it would have to, it would, the resulting building would be a heck of a lot smaller than the current building that's on there. Because the, that non-conforming status that the building has would be totally lost.
Is there any other way it's unique, other than the offsets of the building? It's 1.15 acres. It's old.
It's old. It's been there, it's been, it's been used for that for a long time, I think that's, I, I think you're, if you're trying to say, well, it's AR, it should stay AR. So let's say it just for a second, we're getting way into this now. If it stays AR, and it's got this junky old building, it's going to stay AR with a junky old building that nobody can do anything, and nobody wants to pay to turn it down for one acre.
Right. Go back to us, I would love to see this corner, I know he'd do a great job, I am trying to understand what makes it unique. If the building comes down, it is no longer unique. There's no longer the condition that made this thing approved.
Right. And if the building is half the size, then what's he going to do with it? He has to rebuild another one. He probably wouldn't, he's got to pay to turn it down, he's got to pay to build another one, it's half the size, and do what with it? You know?
Yeah, the uniqueness is that you're, it's a lot that no one can do anything with right now, essentially.
All right.
And the only way to make it usable is to take the building down, and the only way to really make it pencil to take the building down is to rezone it. I mean, in a nutshell.
In a nutshell. So, Mr. Butcher, about those days of the week, did you have any plans, or did you just leave those off? Or was your attention on that?
If it gets me through, I will voluntarily say it's Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. Is that eight to four?
Mondays and Fridays?
You don't think, you don't think Saturdays have a date, your tenants, you know, have things you're going to want to do Saturday mornings?
I mean, I'm, at this point, I'm so far in, I just need to, yes.
Well, the point being is, if you're doing some, something outside the guidelines of Salem Township, and you're on that corner where everybody's going through.
Yeah.
State what you mean, so you don't have to come back for something. We want to know what, you know, so what's your plan there? If you want to take a minute, we could take a minute.
Do you want to look at them?
Yeah, it's working. We're current at Saturday mornings.
Rob, I think Saturday mornings would be just fine.
Monday through Friday, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Six to eight and eight to one?
Yes.
Okay.
I will.
Does anybody else have any questions? Good? Okay, go ahead.
I want to make a motion to recommend approval of the Township Board of Conditional Rezoning request for Mike Butcher to rezon parcel eight, or A-01-27-300-003 from Ogketcher Residential to limited industrial base upon the following findings. The conditions offer minimal potential for new use, user to create nuisance or in compliance, use that would negatively impact surrounding property owners and users. There are conditions or circumstances that warrant a change reasonable to prevent the site from being developed or used as zoned. The proposal rezoned with its conditions is compatible with existing permitting uses in the surrounding area. As stated on the meeting on 3/17, the applicant will allow deliveries Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 8:00, Saturdays from 8:00 to 1:00.
Deliveries or hours of operation?
Hours of operations. Sorry, I didn't have deliveries.
Commissioner Frost, may I make a quick recommendation? For the changed condition, instead of including that as a finding, can we move it to the motion, like, from agricultural residential to limited industrial with conditions as offered by the applicant on March 17? And then, say the findings, if that works, really? Because that, because the amended condition isn't a, isn't one of the findings, it's one of the conditions.
Agricultural residential.
Right, right there, with the amended conditions. It's all provided up and down or something, yeah, right there. Okay, thanks.
From agricultural residential to limited industrial. Based upon the following...
Or with the...
With the added conditions.
Yes.
With the added conditions.
And I wrote, as stated...
As stated at the meeting three seventeen...
Three seventeen meeting by the applicant?
By the applicant, voluntary, voluntary...
Voluntary, or hours of...
For hours of operation Monday through Friday, six to eight, Saturday from eight to one. Is that better?
Yeah, great.
It's an eight AM to one PM, I'm guessing.
Yeah, it's important.
Yeah.
And six AM to eight PM. Okay. It was a little messy.
Sure is.
No, that's okay, we, uh... Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, my goodness, we gotta read this again. Okay. So, we will do a roll call vote in the motion to recommend approval to the Township Board of conditional rezoning request for Mike Butcher to rezone parcel, uh, number A dash zero one dash two seven dash three zero zero dash zero zero three from agricultural residential to limited industrial, um, with the following conditions, as stated at the March seventeenth meeting by the applicant voluntarily for the hours of operations of Monday through Friday from six AM to eight PM, and Saturday, eight AM to one PM. Roll call vote, please.
Con?
Yo.
Frost?
Yes.
Hunsman?
Yes.
Lee Van Dasky?
Yes.
McLaughlin?
Yes.
Rollo?
Yes.
Rizzo?
Yes.
All approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Whitehead.
You can leave this time.
Take a piece of cheesecake.
Grab a snack for your kids. Okay. Well, we went round and round, I think we got it all out, and I think this, there is a lot to understand. But, um, okay, there you go. Now, we're going to eight B USD master plan update discussion only. Okay. Speaking of a lot to read, I'm sure everybody has read this. There has been, um, what it, we, this was brought up last month, um, but it was, it was kind of, it was kind of late in the week, and so it just didn't get the time that it deserved for attention. It appears to be there's some added language, there are some added pictures. Michelle, can you tell us what is different to kind of point out in here? Do you have that, is we don't have a, this has been going on, we don't have a redlined version or anything, so...
Right, so this is the same thing we, this is the same thing that came to you last month, and it's not a redlined anything because it's a, a whole new draft. So, imagine the current USD section, I mean, I started redlining it, but it got so different, so the whole thing's deleted and would be...
Okay.
...replaced by this. And it looks familiar because we pulled out things from the, you know, we've been talking about this for a while, so the various memos and reports that you've seen have a lot of this information, but the draft itself is new.
But from what, just from an overall, is there anything other than some of the language and, and some of the pictures, the intent and everything is still there? What we were looking for was additional clarification, so when developers came in, they had a clear understanding of what we were looking for. Cause I think in the past, our intention was there, but I don't think it was in the words, and then when they come in, it gets a little sticky. So, we wanted to put in here what this is, and a little more clarification in whether it's, um, what we wanted to see, walking paths, all that kind of stuff.
So, there's a whole new section that discusses flex uses, which is a new concept for this, and it, it's allowing for, allowing to regulate based on intensity rather than specific uses within the business park, um, district, or, yeah, districts. There's also, um, key design strategies and development strategies that are all brand new, um, and in there you'll see some of the details that you're talking about, Madam Chair, about what would be expected from any new development, getting a little bit into the weeds, and this, of course, would then eventually inform any zoning change, because this right now is just, you know, it's, it's the vision for how we want everything to look. And then the zoning regulations would be where the, where the regulations happen.
We did have someone come to us, um, a few months ago, and she was concerned about multi-tenant housing and things like that. Um, and she wanted us to change things, cause she was worried about, um, hmm, what could I put this? Ripraps, the only word that kind of comes to mind, sorry, you know, the, the, um, what page is it on?
She didn't wanna feel like the projects.
Yes, thank you, Bonnie. She didn't want anything looking like the projects in here. I'm not, I, I, we see what this is, but I didn't quite catch in here what this isn't. Did I miss that, or, um, like, it has nice pictures with this, is there any place that anybody here, did you see where it says this, we don't want it looking, do we do that?
Not generally.
Not generally, okay, it's just a vision.
Try to keep it positive.
Keep it positive, okay, all right. Um, one of the things, I was looking at one of these maps, oh, it's not that one, um, and it talks about highway commercial. There's a, a section. There's a section in one of our maps, and it's highway commercial. Is that, I didn't see that in here, is that new, is that taken out, what, what happened?
So, the future land use map for the USD doesn't include highway commercial style uses.
Okay.
The, the idea is to really avoid that.
Right. Right, so that's, um, see, I was looking at, we've got, I've got a number of these maps, and it's got highway commercial on all of them, and so my question to Paul was, where is the highway commercial? I think it's one little tiny spot.
Northwest corner, fourteen, Jefferson.
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about where in the current zoning is it located? Oh, right, right.
Oh, I was, I was wondering about in, in this packet here, um, I see it on here, but it's not in here, so did it go somewhere?
It's not.
Okay, it's not, it's not in this...
Correct.
...area, it's a little bit outside.
Well, the, yeah, the vision for the future land use for the USD is to not have highway commercial.
Okay.
There's a, a lot more flexibility in these envisioned zoning designations, so that uses that would come up in highway commercial could still be permitted, provided that they are aligned with the form and the, the design that we're really looking for in order to make this the, like, inviting epicenter of commercial activity in, in the township. So, it's not to say that uses that are permitted in highway commercial would not be permitted here, that's, that's not what it's saying, it's just how they are to be developed.
Okay. And in, in these developments, in talking about scale and whatnot, um, do we do that in here, or is that...
Absolutely, yeah, a lot of the, the design strategies are, are looking at scale and form, um, and some of the other site characteristics. Obviously, we're, we're not going into dimensional standards, like parcel size wouldn't come into play, cause that would be more of a, you know, working with what we have for one, and then zoning.
Right. On page five, we've got this giant, um, business park building, um, I didn't, and I see the distribution of the business park areas, both, well, smaller multi-tenant units, uh, twenty-five hundred to ten thousand, also single tenant, actually, up to one hundred fifty thousand, three hundred fifty thousand square feet in size, so, I guess that, I just didn't, sometimes you start reading these things and we, our brain starts going, oh, let's develop all of the USD, and it's like, no, that's, that's not what this is for. This is a master plan, it's a vision, um, but I think everybody gets nervous, because we have had people come in, developers come in, and, and, you know, things weren't quite as clear.
Mm-hmm.
And so, it was challenging.
And in preparing the draft, we did have conversations with some commercial real estate developers to see what would even work, is our vision even...
Doable?
Yes. And specific conversations about the square footage for business park uses as well.
Right. Especially with having such big places, and then they disappear, or they're not in use anymore.
Definitely.
We don't want a big giant albatross sitting out there somewhere, but I guess that might come, I don't know, I guess we'll have to wait and see. It's flexible. Who else has questions? I've talked a lot.
I have?
Yes.
I, you mentioned, I mentioned about the northwest corner fourteen and fourteen, and I can remember, I don't know, Bart, but way back when Johnson Control had, that, it was mentioned, that, that corner was a truck stop on the woods. Has it been relitived or something? I, I was hoping Paul could answer that, but I, I don't know if that's changed or dropped, or is it still there?
That parcel, that parcel, right, is still, it's, everything is zoned the same. This does not change any zoning. It's the vision for how we would like the future zoning to be, and even if the zoning were to change on that parcel, that could continue, it'd just be a, a legal non-conformity. But any new development, if someone wants to demo it and build new, then they would have to conform with whatever zoning ordinance standards are in place at that time, which this isn't even changing. This is just the dream for the zoning and for other policies and programs within the township. We, we need this in order to change the zoning.
I just don't want to get, have it forgotten, that, that's said in there.
Certainly.
And, and the way this is all trying to, uh, come out, is something really appealing to the eye, and thinking a truck stop would not be appealing to the eye. I don't care, I don't, uh, you know, put trees around it, or fences, or one day it's still a truck stop.
Um, I guess I do have one more question, is, I've got a note here, hotels and conference center. I don't know, we've talked about that, have we talked about that, you guys? Is that something that was ever on the table?
I don't recall.
Do you guys remember that, hotels or conference centers or anything like that? Did we ever discuss that in, in this area? Did we ever bring that up?
I thought we did.
Yeah, it's just in the, uh...
Would there be a space for, I don't, don't make any questions. I mean, I don't, would there be a space for that somewhere, like, where would that be?
In the flex, in the BP business park district, definitely. And that's, in a lot of the communities we work in that are along the freeway, that's been a conversation that we've been having.
Okay.
There, there's kind of a demand for hotels and conference centers, despite, you know, still coming out of COVID.
Yeah.
But that, and that's what's so great about making the business park flexible, it's cause we're, we're looking at intensity, and whenever uses are in demand at that time or pop up, we can react at the moment.
So, was that allowed in highway services?
Uh, in highway commercial? I don't believe so. But let me check before.
And then, uh...
Uh, it is, it's permitted, hotels or ends.
So, we talk about pathways and, and connectivity and all that kind of stuff, and so for the business park area, how much do we have to connect that to the other side of the freeway? Have we done that? Do we do that? Or do we, do we write it in as our vision?
We could. We could require it. It would be very challenging.
And hopefully it wouldn't change.
Uh, not, not necess, I'm just thinking in general, ten thousand foot level, that, you know, this is our area, and, you know, we look at it now, and it's kind of hard to, to envision, envision, but, you know, whatever's over there to, to move people across the road, um, not that they don't be walking or anything like that, but, you know, how does that connect?
Right.
Get a new, get a new bridge, get a bigger bridge, get a wider bridge, but, you know, make sure there's a walking path on the side, whatever. Is that something we would put in here, or...
Definitely.
Should we put in there, or is that not the place for it?
So, on page sixteen, we do have the non-motorized pathway plan, and there's, you know, there's pathways that are going right across the freeway where the road is now, um, but if there was an idea to build like a pedestrian bridge over the freeway and you want, and that was a goal, then it could be also drawn on this plan. Now, the steps to make it happen are significant, but if you don't have it in the plan, you don't really have an ask from whatever entity would be needed, you know, state.
Right. I mean, it's not like any kind of requirement or anything like that, I'm just thinking we have this one area, and everything's so small now, it's gonna grow, where the roads, are they really gonna grow? Do we have to ask for it? Do we have to put it in there, or is that like a given, or, um, I don't know, what do you guys think?
I think it's a good idea, I mean, it's, it's certainly worth putting, you know, on the master plan as a consideration, because certainly, we do have a desirable downtown area, or, you know, right off the highway area. People do wanna walk, they don't want people walking across, you know, in an unsafe manner, especially if there's high traffic, you know, but it's certainly worth considering.
I just know that I go to, and, and, we go to Indy again, um, and we go to these conference centers, and, and they get, you know, they get a bunch of people in on the weekend, and they need to eat, they always, when they're done with their stuff, they wanna go and eat, they're, they're there for the weekend, they're there together, they're doing team building, they're doing this and that, during the weekday, it seems to be... So on page 16, we do have the non-motorized pathway plan and there's, you know, there's pathways that are going right across the freeway where the road is now. But if there was an idea to build like a pedestrian bridge over the freeway and you want, and that was a goal, then it could be also drawn on this plan. Now the steps to make it happen are significant, but if you don't have it in the plan, you don't really have an ask from whatever entity would be needed, you know, state.
I mean, it's not like any kind of requirement or anything like that. I'm just thinking we have this one area and everything's so small now, it's going to grow. Where the roads, are they really going to grow? Do we have to ask for it? Do we have to put it in there or is that like a given or, um, I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's, it's certainly worth putting, you know, on the master plan as a consideration because certainly we do have a desirable downtown area or, you know, right off the highway area. People do want to walk. They don't want people walking across, you know, in an unsafe manner, especially if there's high traffic then, you know. It's certainly worth considering.
I just know that I go to, and I, we go to Indy again, um, and we go to these conference centers and, and they get, you know, they get a bunch of people in on the weekend and they need to eat. They always, when they're done with their stuff, they want to go and eat. They're, they're there for the weekend. They're there together. They're doing team building. They're doing this and that. During the weekday, it seems to be everything goes back to normal. I was just thinking if we did have a hotel and conference center somewhere over there that, you know, people carpool, you know, a lot of people that they, they fly in or Uber, Vanel carpool or whatever and go to, I'm just trying to, I'm thinking along those lines, what I do with my family for sports and whatnot. So I was just, just a thought.
So you're thinking of a location aside from Godfordsen to get folks from the BP over to the north side of N 14?
Or depending, you know, maybe there's businesses over there and they want, all want to go to lunch or something like that. And they're all going to jump in the car. Are they going to go? Is the bridge going to be wide enough? You know, do they, do they ride bikes? I don't know.
I don't think it has to be separate from Godfordsen. I think it's just.
Okay, perfect.
I think.
Yeah, no, no. Not another bridge.
Okay, good.
No, I was just thinking there's already a bridge there, but whatever happens, you know, if there's going to be repairs or, you know, is, can they make it wider? I, I don't know. I just thought, just to kind of keep the flow instead of, and so this isn't so isolated down here. Is there opportunity? I just, been in the business world, that's, you know, they all got to go lunch. Everybody's got to eat.
So in addition to locating that on this non-motorized pathway plan, we can include a section of how we're envisioning that to pair next to the road on Godfordsen so that it feels safe and something that you would want families to be able to travel on. Is that?
I mean, if you drive down 96 eastbound, they have all kinds of walking paths right across 96, both east and westbound as you drive downtown. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's a hard ask.
I just don't want it isolated. You know, I want to be, to be, I would like to see if it's, if it's accessible. I, I don't know if it's doable.
They just put a double fencing, double fencing.
Yeah. Okay. It was just a thought.
And have we specified what kind of housing? I know that you brought up earlier, one of the residential concerns. Have we specified whether it's single family housing, whether or not it's town, house or apartment? Like, is an apartment complex coming in and built?
Well, that's what we were talking about, what we didn't want to see, right? Does that, is that ruled out for sale?
You're talking about for, um, the residential districts here?
Yes.
So it's single family residential. All the yellow would be single family residential. And then the, we have the, we separate it into low density and higher density essentially. And then there are, the orange sections are for multiple family residential, which would be attached townhomes, um, or row houses or higher density apartments, whether that, they'd be lower profile, of course, to, uh, be compatible with all the other design strategies. But the single family zones would be for detached, single family residential.
I think the answer is to try and make them multiple, make sure it's not a scaled, you know, that is more like townhomes and the things that nature not. Apartment building per se or bare.
It may want to be some consideration for single family homes or single family townhomes. And kind of getting away from the apartment complexes as we have longer term, you know, someone buys a place, obviously they're going to invest in the community and be longer term.
How many people are we saying? How many families reside in this? In that, right there? How many families is that?
Um, I couldn't see what you're holding up.
Sorry.
In the, in the whole, oh, in the villa, in the.
Not living in the red buildings, they're living in the yellow and the orange.
So if, we're assuming the like current zoning standards, um, we, I don't have it in here. I ran the density and we know how many units it could produce. It's not, it didn't end up in this draft. But if there is like concern about the type of multiple family residential that would be in there, um, we could include.
Here's where I'm going. It's just in here if I just say where I'm going. So. Where do all these kids play?
In the design strategies, we have requirements to have open space and it can be activated open space so that we're talking playgrounds or similar. We could enhance those requirements more to make, to, to address that.
You know, I mean, I've done, raised four kids, crazy with sports. I don't see a baseball field. I don't see a soccer field. You know, there was something that said community building where there's a swimming pool and an exercise room or anything like that. If there was, heck, even if there was, you know, nine hole golf course going around it. I don't know. I just, I don't know. Got to let kids get outside. Got to let them move, got to let them run. Got to give them their own space. Otherwise they find things to do that you don't approve of. So if we want to talk asks, if a business wants to come in and we're saying things like, yeah, great. By the way, we're going to name the new baseball field after you and this is where it goes. You know? I don't know how that's done, but let's get on that. You can't, you can't ask all these families to come in here and this is mom and dad working, I'm sure, because they want to be able to get on the highway and get to Detroit and these kids are going to be coming home from school and this is where do they go?
Has the township considered a, like some kind of community space somewhere in the master plan? I mean, if you think about downtown Plymouth, they have the triangle. Uh, if you think about Northville, they have that little pavilion and then they have that park, you know, just across the street. I think we should consider, you know, having the area in here as space to, you know, make, you know, just to like make Salem Township special. And in that, I think we could create a space for a park, um, or some open space.
Well, there are a lot of green, green spaces on this.
That takes care of eight out of the 12 months.
I mean, the park would be there.
Yeah. I'm, I'm talking inside and outside, you know, give them a place to go inside. I mean, if there was a, a community building, whatever, I mean, I don't know.
That's not for us, is it?
So we, we can, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a lot of related visions and what we can do, and we can address all of them in the master plan. It's not so much a requirement of the developer to create a sports complex or similar indoor, outdoor, whatever scale, but we can have a strategy that we, we set a goal to work with those types of developers and we want to attract those type developers. We say in our master plan, we want you to locate in this area. We can't require it, but we can say, let's, let's explore partnerships with other sports facilities. You know, they have the Legacy Center up in, by Whitmore Lake. There's a, there's, there's partners that can be developed, partnerships that can be developed and that would be stated in the master plan. We wouldn't be saying, we want to locate a sports complex right here or we want to require multiple family residential developers to build a soccer field. But there are ways to get that vision on paper. So we can certainly add that in.
Then I guess I'm saying this, so I'm just, I mean, you're talking about bike paths. Where are the, where are the kids going to ride to? Give them a place to ride to. Go to the ice cream place, find, cut out behind these buildings, go to the sports field, great, then be able to ride around the back and come into the back of their house. Perfect. You just, you just made kids' life completely different.
I also think that in looking at these buildings, I mean, having a big YMCA, community centers, I don't know what kind of, I don't want to get into that business. Where's sports being, I don't know if that's, that's really our thing. I know kids need to exercise absolutely a hundred percent. We do have, like TJ's, we've got the single family homes. We've got walking path, you know, are the, are the, I guess my build, my set, my thought would be, you know, are the buildings set up to where, you know, I remember when I first came into family, said, you know, they kind of clustered the buildings a little bit so they had some open space, you know? Maybe, maybe our buildings might don't, might be, part of that is to have that walking space and more park-like instead of just all, um, sheath or squares on. You know, I mean, you know, like that. But if, maybe it's, if how we're placing some of these multi-tenant things or where we're placing them might provide a little bit more open space, would give the kids a place to play in opposed to put in a big, I'm sure nobody does YMCA, but that's what I remember.
I, I guess where I'll say this is if, if a developer looks at this and sees all this and says, okay, this is the space and this is how many buildings I could put up. I think if one corner was carved out and said, hey, this is, this is a park. There's a soccer field, there's a baseball field, there's a community building in this area. And you, you go and look at like Canton, they put in that community center, was it on Beck? East side, east side of Beck as you go south of, south of Ford Road and something like that. If they see that, then they know, okay, yeah, there's something in here that at least is setting aside. Don't make the assumption that it's all going to be, you know, five-story buildings with Feng Shui, everything. I don't know.
Why we do this? I think all of our ideas are getting all twined.
Yeah.
Tangled up.
I do think the.
There's our idea. It's kind of important to us. How are you going to fit that in there?
It's, it is fit in and some of the design strategies already if you look into the different districts, but we can certainly flesh them out more and make it a little bit more detailed.
Or run a little more clear.
Yeah, sure.
About our intentions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Bruce.
As a whole, as master plan item, you want to make sure that you're, you're calling it out, that you want to make sure development considers all that, but it's also locate multiple and flex, I think. You could have more senior type developers. You could have more children type developers. And things of that nature. But one thing I think we are trying to be careful not to do is have an attraction where you've got people coming from all over the community that, you know, they have seven different high schools coming to play soccer, you know, in the USD. You know, we want for the local people to use for, for activities and something they want to keep within the community. And we'd like to, I would encourage the developers to put that into their development plans in the scale of where our plan is presenting to us. It depends on what plan they're presenting to us, what scale of parks and whatnot we want in there, but even plan preservation, we're just making sure we have the appropriate parks, but not so much that we have to spend extra tax dollars to maintain parks for other people. We're not intend, you know, we're intending to maintain parks for the Western world to enjoy and we want for our people to enjoy and that's what we want.
And you're clear that our housing regardless of whatever it is, whether it's single or multi, especially the multi-family, you know, we're still a kind of a rural community and so we want to make sure that that character is clearly defined and, and people can not.
Were there any parts of, were there any parts of the draft that, um, felt like they were conflicting with that vision?
Yes. I don't know if it's conflicting, but I don't know if it was clear enough of what we don't want. But you said keep a positive, so that was just my question.
Well, you can say what you don't want by saying what you do. So.
I think there's an alternate side to this, right? So I mean, if we create, if we have the vision for a space for the community, obviously we're having businesses down there. We want to draw a community to a place where a community can hang out. And if businesses are there, those businesses can be, uh, you know, patrons. So, you know, that's, but, you know, I guess just an area to define that space. I mean, if, if LR is kind of our concern, maybe rethinking what LR is and if, you know, maybe our point or to our point, making a space where we can come have, you know, music in the park in the weekends or having, you know, have a space where kids do want to come play a really cool place, Gabe, and it brings a lot of families in to go to the businesses around there. So, I mean, I think it needs to be, have a little bit of future vision as to where we'd want it initially and then obviously build out around that, um, you know, different areas that make sense, um, to surround, you know, single family homes and other businesses. And then obviously corporations or hotels at some point, you know? But I think if it's an afterthought or we trust somebody else to build it, it's, you know, they're going to build it as small and as cheap as possible because they're doing it as a favor for us. So I just, I think it needs to be a little, you know, more thought out about, you know, the kind of space that we'd want for our community. Because right now, we don't have a park, right? So like, where do we go? You know, my kids, we don't go to Salem Township. You know, we're going to Northville. We're going to South Lion out there behind the Wendy's, you know, maybe to the school, you know, the school park or something. But there's no, there's no place that's cool in Salem Township. You know, music in the park, we're going to Northville in Plymouth. And why can't it be us? You know, we have the space for it and people want to come build around it. If we have a vision, you know, they'll come. We just have to be, kind of have some forethought with it. So that's, that's my thought with it.
I think it's wild.
I think, I think you spot it.
There you go, Bart. Pull them all together. Good job. That's where the road is.
I think.
The only question, I have all the parks in the municipal community, are the people that live in USD park for them? Are you going to invite everybody up to the USD park to community center?
There's too many people, I probably won't go.
Tell you what, you, you put up a playground or, you know, the Plymouth Triangle or something like that.
I think it's.
The, the townhomes, the houses, where everyone's home, apartments that go first are the ones that are overlooking that or close to it.
Well, it depends on where you put it, I guess.
And they're million dollar homes right now. I mean, you look in Plymouth downtown around the triangle, hard to find someplace for under a mil. I mean, it doesn't happen and it brings in.
Crazy.
You're not going to try and look for them?
No, I'm not going to try.
Well, these people like that kind of stuff.
I know a lot of people that now that their kids are getting older and they want, they want a condo somewhere near downtown where they can go to dinner, where they don't have to cook ever and they want to walk and they want to go to music and they want to go to bars.
They want to pick up a coffee in a Jimmy John's and go visit a park and then go home.
Our rural houses downtown, they go for 32 a month.
Dang. I just thought something, just what did you just say? Oh, when outdoor dining, is that, is that, that's all worked in there too, right?
Yes. If you make the main drag go.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely work it in there, sure.
I think that's important because we see that problem all over the place in Northville and Plymouth, they're all out on the, on the sidewalk. I bet they wish they had a nice patio like schools.
Yes.
Do you actually see people using outdoor dining? I've been to North, I was on Lion probably 50 times since they started putting that in there. I have not seen a support out there once.
Downtown Plymouth is loaded and so is Northville.
And the difference is the main drag goes right through South Lion and it does not go through Northville and Plymouth. Do not put the main drag right down the center of your whole major shopping district. Push traffic to the outside, trickle it through. The reason families like the Plymouth is because of slow restricted traffic. You want to get around Plymouth, you take Ann Arbor Road.
Or across the street.
You can, you can just go right around there. If you come into the center of Plymouth, if you're there for a purpose, you're there for something that exists.
Trying to grill.
At least have the same attitude, just do not.
The Lion Grill, Bobby. The Lion Grill. There are people out there all the time on their patio.
Well, when I turn that corner, I don't see them.
We're out there. We're out there.
Mexican, uh, capo, whatever that is. Cantina.
Oh, was it?
I don't see them.
TJ said it was loaded yesterday.
Anyways.
Oh, the wrong time. You and early bird.
Discussion, right?
Yeah.
Is it ever going to end?
No, it's, we're going, what's that?
Is this discussion ever going to end?
Probably not. We're going to stay here.
Okay, then I'm going home. I'm sorry. I can't stand it. I've already gone over the same track 10 times. You already have a complete, maybe whatever they call it from Cho Stat and it tells you what, how he's going to do or what he wants to do.
It's residential. It's multiple family residential.
And you can change it even if you change your master plan.
So what's the difference between those?
The density. The density is different. So we're, essentially the yellow would be like lower density, multiple family residential. And then we've got the higher density closer to the, and the orange, closer to the, the retail, that would be the red. Retail, yeah. So that the, the density of the residential decreases as you go further away from Godfordsen so that sort of like a slow decline until you get to that single family residential?
There isn't like concept pictures of the differences between, I mean, the orange, are you talking like apartments?
Yeah, like two or three-story apartments. We can include concept plans to make it more graspable.
TJ had a concern. I didn't know what it was. It's really, like, not that much business in there.
Yeah, there isn't. Doesn't seem to be a lot.
Did anybody else make that?
Small, pre-skinning places.
So TJ just brought up a point when she was looking at the map. And she said, "There's really very few businesses, but it's more residential."
So the only businesses in this map are the ones in red.
Yes. And we know that. We've been looking at it for like ever.
Most of this is well in the district.
North of M14.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All that, all the way to M14.
Territory is residential.
If I was looking at this, I would take the, I would take the MR on both sides of the VMU and make those.
What page are you on?
Uh, on page nine. Yes, I would take, I would take VMU and I would take VMU, I would make that whole thing VMU. And then I would take LR across the street or whatever that is. And I would envision that for something for the township. And that's where I would, that's where I would put, if we're going to do something, if we're just visions, you know, casting. That's where I would want to drop something for the township there. That way they could go across the street and obviously eat. And then you could wrap your, uh.
Where's the township?
Oh, you know, the circles. Yeah, myself, I've lived here. And it's approaching all residential homes that are here. And, and that's, just keep us stripped. Cut the strip in half.
That would be open though, you know, so that, or, or LR would just be going. And just keep your single-family residential.
This is never coming.
Yeah, oh, this is something else too. These are businesses and these are apartments. Then the apartments are sharing parking lots with businesses.
On this map?
I see, yeah, I hear you. I see it.
Yeah, so if that's the parking lots and then you've got your apartments or whatever, that means they're sharing.
Right, right, yeah. Like a, like a mixed-use facility would. And so this is just a concept. We can certainly evolve it if there's a desire for more mixed-use. Then the, the sections that are there in orange could be mixed-use. In which case, to clarify, they would be retail and apartments. So if it's mixed, you would have residents sharing parking lots with retail users. But we can.
Are we trying to get away from apartments? Is that your thought?
I think we're just looking at how much business, how much residential stuff.
There's, there's, just don't seem to be a whole lot of space for businesses. I'm a lot more for, you know, multi-family residential. Surrounded by single-family residential, you know, light residential and should have been all of it, just a little bit of it. I think we could have more business.
More business there, more business there.
Yeah, but if you do business there, then, then, then we're going to have to create roads to them instead of using that. Which is just.
So this would be business there.
Yeah.
And so I think they would pull into that and make it go to different places.
So the way the future land use map has it right now, that village-mixed-use area can support, under the current standards, 4 million square feet of village-style commercial uses. So it, it looks small on that concept map, but it's not. There would be a lot of space in this. And I guess the hesitation is that there is a demand for housing. And we don't want to have empty retail storefronts by like overextending the area that we designate for retail. I live in Ipsy. There's massive demand for housing and so many vacant storefronts downtown. Very depressing. So I guess, but, but if there's a concern, we can, I mean, village-mixed-use does allow for multiple-family residential. Or it could allow for multiple-family residential. That's, that's the whole, the whole vision, to be more flexible.
I think she was just looking at it with a different set of eyes because we keep looking at the same thing over and over and over, talking about it over and over and over.
It's a really good point, yeah.
And, and now she's, I don't know what she brought up, but it's a good, you know, oh, yeah. So kind of looking at proportionally, but I, I don't remember like the size, like you said, of 4 million square feet.
I don't remember.
I don't remember what 4 million square feet is. It's a lot. See, I think, I think.
Can you guys get that stuff?
I am grumpy.
It's grumpy.
And that is, that, that image does only show the big, the village-mixed-use portion that's south of Old North Parrot River Road. Because there is still.
I'm just going to approach the bench. It doesn't even show all this, which could also be. Yeah, it's a, it's a crummy, it's a crummy.
Well, that, that area is the one.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Reports of commissioners and correspondence, board of trustees?
I have your report.
Just put our budget right here.
Oh, okay. Doge in here. Zoning Board of Appeals?
Nothing new.
Nothing. Land preservation and conservation? Our meeting tomorrow. Anything interesting coming on the horizon or just still working on it?
We're working on it. Like everything else that goes slow. Or we wanted to. Or wait, so is, so is.
Oh.
Other entities.
Okay. Planning consultant review?
Thank you for all the feedback. We'll go back and get you another draft.
Okay, thank you. Approval of the minutes for February 24th, 2025?
Hey, real quick, can you, in your draft that you bring back, can you let us know where there's existing houses already? Because in this map, I can see in there, I'm looking at my phone, it looks like there's already exists, are existing, um, residential houses where they should be. But it's just less of a, it's less space for us to be able to kind of socialize, I think, for, for.
So is that what they call those layered maps? You know, you can just, kind of thing, does, do people do that?
We could. It's, it's, we could, definitely easy to review those online. But we could, um, that, absolutely we could. But the hesitation I have is that we really don't want to scare people into thinking that we're rezoning anything or not. And they can continue in their house even after it is eventually rezoned, which is not even what is happening here.